So, yeah, obviously a lot of challenges, competing demographics on there.
You ready, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. He's on his way.
How many coworkers have you got?
My wife's an elementary principal in Hopkien District.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it is.
From ESPs to other teachers, ministry to staff.
Well, what do they think?
So, could you shut the door, please?
What do they think that's gonna happen when their teachers are treated so disrespectfully?
Right.
Thank you.
And they have no power.
You can't touch your child who's just fine, but you can't, you don't have any authority. If my daughter was a bus driver, she said, she would, she said, every time there's a disrespect or a crap on the bus, she said, it's always the bus driver that you never remember the child, and they swear, you know, whatever it is, it's okay.
Perfect.
You have one that says...
Yeah, there's two of them.
This audio only?
Yeah, yes.
A lot of challenges.
You saw that one?
I think so, so it's, it's in, it's in the one that says AV recorder.
It's so difficult to...
Oh, did you make it back?
No, but what's up?
But yeah, it is, isn't it? Where is she?
She's on the border from Parkland, Brooklyn. From the Lake Elway.
From the Elway.
She was, she's been at the brick school for three years there, and she's assistant brick school for three years there before she went to the brick school.
I have a grandson, he's the same quality, he's a quiet choice, he's there, he's, he's brand new, I mean, he's, he's good, he's just...
All right. We'll get started here, we've got an hour. Turn on your microphones, please. Five thirty-four, Thursday, August eleventh, 2022. This is a work session for the budget discussion, primarily tonight, we'll be talking fire and public works, make sure we got the details there. We have one hour approximately now, and then the next budget session would, work session would be on Monday, August twenty-ninth. Fire management, start with that. Page ten. So, the, we've got a couple of things highlighted here. One is professional services, line item three-ten. Our projected for 2022 is thirty-six hundred and fifty dollars. Our budget in 2022 is twenty-one thousand, we're coming in at thirteen thousand eight twenty.
Correct.
Let us know what's going on there.
So, when the initial budget formulation was put together, the assumption was made that the professional services out of that three-ten line item would only be for the Anoka County Fire Protection Council dues and fees for the year. In reality, we're also using that professional services line item to account for things like medical direction, recertified, recertification fees for our firefighters, both on the EMS and fire capacity, and then any other kind of miscellaneous professional services that come up through the year, whether that's testing requirements for compressors or SCBA's, that sort of thing. So, I think there is, between myself and Ms. Jaeger, there was just that miscommunication that that line item was specifically and only for the Anoka County Fire Protection Council, but we are using that line item for other professional services as well.
All right. You've got repairs and maintenance. Again, projected for this year is eighteen hundred. We budgeted high last year for this year. Thirteen-five, we're down to eight thousand. What do you anticipate in repairs and maintenance? What falls in that category?
So, what you'll see is, there's still some invoices that have yet to be processed on the repairs and maintenance piece. We just had windows replaced at the fire station. Grass one has been at the shop for an extended period of time, again, with that electrical short. They think they finally have that isolated. Much like everything else, those, those repair costs have hit us a little bit harder than most other industries, so we just wanted to leave ourselves a little bit of a cushion. As you all remember, we've had a number of maintenance issues with both Rescue on this year and Grass one, so we want to make sure that we're funded there to maintain those pieces of...
So, what do you anticipate on the training budget?
Training budget, again, we're leaving it a little bit on the high side. We do have a new applicant that will be before you tonight as part of the council packet. We did also receive another applicant today, or a potential applicant reached out today via the city website. So, we want to try and capture as many folks as we can yet this year, since Oak Grove is running a firefighter one and two class here in September. But we also want to make sure that we're leaving that open for next year, because we want to focus on some professional development for our leadership staff, specifically the assistant chief and the captains, whether that's fire officer one, fire instructor one, strategy and tactics. We want to really start kicking into high gear next year with the training piece, knowing that the contract is up December thirty-first, if it's not renewed, we want to make sure that we're giving all the tools and assets that are needed for the leadership team to transition into an independent organization, if that's the direction the city council wishes to go.
So, does this also cover the regular training of the...
Yes, so if we bring in instructors, it covers that cost. If we send folks to conferences, it covers that cost. If we bring in a course or host a class, it would cover that cost. So, it's really all encompassing. It's not just sending people off for recruit training, it's any training that we host that either brings in an instructor that requires a service charge, or sending people off to trainings that are outside the city.
When, when you set this, do you take a look at what your classes, your typical classes are anticipated for this coming year?
So, we've kicked it around a little bit on where we kind of think we want to go. Now that we have Captain Patrick on board, who's managing the training piece, he's got some ideas of things that he wants to see come in. One of the, the unknowns that we have right now is, we've been pretty disappointed in the quality of our EMS training up to this point, which has been provided, been provided by Alina, the quality of instruction, we have very little, very little medical direction follow-up with our instruction. We just signed on with a new medical director. With that being said, we also want to look at bringing in a different EMS training facilitator to deliver our monthly EMS training. The cost is wildly variant on the EMS side, whether you go with the Hennepin County, or you sign on with a private contract for a private company, those prices vary anywhere from thirty-five hundred bucks a year to twelve thousand dollars a year, depending on who we go with. So, we're still vetting on what that looks like. We know we want to make some enhancements to our EMS training. We know we want to host at least a couple of classes internally to beef up our, our leadership capacity with our standing captains and assistant chief, and we know we want to bring in some, some general fire ground tactic courses for the entire department. So, we're thinking we're gonna come in with what we've identified right now, somewhere between thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars worth of training courses and instructors. We're leaving ourselves a little bit of extra for hiring on folks for next year. So, I think at twenty thousand dollars, we're relatively safe. That's certainly one area that I would be more cautious in reducing than in other areas.
So, when you say the, the trainings, so the general department and then the captains and the officers?
Correct.
That's all inclusive?
Correct.
So, what's your training schedule that you're intending, right now you're working with Captain Patrick on that?
Correct.
And, so you'll get that set. What are we anticipating for new staff? Originally, we were talking eight?
Yep.
We've, we've lost a couple from our original.
Correct.
And, so are we still looking at six, eight?
Assuming the, the candidate that we're vetting right now works out, and the one that has reached out today with interest, I think we're probably still gonna look for another five.
So, the candidate you're vetting right now, is that candidate gonna stay in Nalvan long enough?
We don't know. Quite frankly, I don't know if any of our staff are gonna stay in Nalvan long term. One of the challenges in the part-time fire service that we see, and for those of you that pay attention locally, Elk River opened up their new fire station over by Twin Lakes, they anticipated hiring twenty firefighters, they got six. They went out door-to-door on Night to Unite, they made contact with dozens, if not hundreds of people, they got one interest card from going around on Night to Unite. It's not a unique problem to Nalvan, unfortunately. One of the things that I think was really unintended, but is a significant consequence of COVID, is people have really pulled back, especially when it comes to being out in the public, much less being out in the public when they're sick and ill. So, that's really starting to have an impact, especially not just on part-time fire departments, but full-time fire departments as well. Assistant Chief Lawrence works for St. Louis Park, they've lost three people that were not expected retirements this year, which is typically unheard of in the career fire service. So, I'm optimistic we'll be able to get five, but so far, it's, it's been a tough, tough road to sledding.
Some recruiting, we've talked about signage around town.
Yep.
We've talked about the newsletter, we've talked about the website.
Correct.
Do we have any, anything else? I'm noticing pretty much everywhere I go, the...
You can see our flyers out.
The paid-on call signs are popping up.
They are. You know, we have, our initial focus on recruitment was having staff reach out to their friends and neighbors within the community, those that they felt that there would be an interest. Out of that, we did end up with the initial group of three, which is working out fantastic up to this point. We really started to shift our focus now to getting the word out around town via the flyers. Night to Unite was great for us, unfortunately, again, we didn't identify anybody who was interested in participating as a firefighter through Night to Unite.
We, we found a couple on Night to Unite, but I don't think the, the age brackets.
Right.
On, on either end.
Right.
Some real young and some not so young.
Right. You know, I, I think what I have seen, what I have experienced in my life, in my career as far as recruitment, it's the really simple, organic things that we're doing. For example, when we're verifying and validating burn permits, having that one-to-one interaction with the community. I know Captain Sukie is still planning on getting out to farmer's market one of these evenings and shake hands and meet people. I think some folks are gonna be heading out to the threshing festival here in a couple of weeks to just to shake hands and talk to people, but that's really where we can engage people and provide the feedback that they're looking for. Because I think a lot of people, they see the flyer, they see the website, they have that internal kind of dialogue, maybe they talk about with their spouse or their kids, hey, what do you think if I did this? But when you can really have that feedback, especially on a small group setting, that tends to be the most powerful. So, the more that we're out there in the community, the better opportunities that we're gonna have to recruit. Doesn't always work out that way, but that, in my experience, that tends to be the most powerful.
Yeah, Captain Sukie, you talked about the threshing show and, obviously, an open house at Heritage Festival.
Correct.
A lot of recruiting paperwork and...
We're making strides slowly but truly.
Maybe you could have a, one of those picture-taking booths, them in a uniform, so they could see what they would look like.
No options are off the table at this point.
All right, so, so you don't see any anticipated cost from a recruitment standpoint, but if we get to five, and I'm gonna go back to the training.
Correct.
If we're thinking twelve to fourteen thousand on the planned training for the officers and the, and the staff, and we get five recruits that are completely raw, is this gonna be enough?
If it's not, we will, we will have to pull back in some areas, but I think with, with the number that we're at today, we should be able to make it work.
So, for your salary line item, what's in there for, is that anticipating getting seven people?
Correct. So, as we talked about last year when we were going through the budget process, we didn't have an entire year of data, right? We went live the end of April, we went through the budget process beginning and around July last year, we didn't have officers appointed yet, we really had a lot of unknowns.
Yep.
Now that we have an entire, well, a better snapshot of what it looks like as far as paying personnel, run volumes, attendance, things of that, we're starting to get a little bit, bit, better picture on where we can make those, those smart reductions. Certainly, the unknown that we deal with in our industry is, we could have three or four major events that blow our payroll out of the water, right? Unpredictable, unscheduled events. So, we typically always try to budget a little bit on the higher side with our payroll, just because of that unknown. I'd rather be under than over, just like I run my personal checkbook, but I think sixty thousand is a number that we can work with. We are also sensitive to the fact that we want to make sure that we're providing high-level service, but at the right dollar mark, right? So, try to make those smart reductions where we can.
So, to connect, sixty thousand is two that we think we have now, plus an additional five that are unidentified between now and...
Potentially.
Between now and the end of the year.
Correct.
And the challenge there is, you can anticipate by our call volume.
Correct.
What you can anticipate is mutual and auto aid.
Correct.
And we've had significant amount of that this summer.
Yes, we have.
And, and just to remind the council, that's, because there's mutual aid, if somebody comes and helps us, we don't pay, they pay their own firefighters, but if we go help somebody else, we're paying our firefighters to help out over there. So, we have been outside the city a fair amount this summer, and that will add up. So, that's, that really the unknown in there.
Correct. You know, if you, if you take a snapshot back at July, and we'll go over the, the report for the month, in the course of five days, we probably spent twelve hours, fourteen hours in Ramsey, times however many firefighters showed up to those events. It just happened to be that, that week for the Ramsey Fire Department. In turn, we will have our weeks where Ramsey is coming to us, or St. Francis, or Oak Grove, or vice versa, but it has been very busy this year in our surrounding communities. We tend, we were a little bit busier over the winter and required a little bit more assistance over the winter with our string of pole shed fires. Over July, seemed to be Ramsey's turn, so hopefully we're, we're settling down a little bit now, and hopefully it'll stay that way for a little bit, but...
How many pole fires did we have?
Last winter, we had three. Two were pretty significant, one was relatively minor. Usually, we see those pole shed and garage fires really start to get rocking once we hit the, the winter warming months. I think a lot of people are very judicious about maintaining their in-home fireplaces and wood stoves, where I think some of the maintenance tends to lack is some of those external or accessory heating devices and pole sheds. I don't know that they get serviced and maintained quite to the same quality that we do with our inside heating devices, so that tends to be the bigger problem.
All right, computer office equipment, et cetera. I think we just bought computers, are you looking for more?
We'll need one more for sure next year. So, Patrick has a laptop, Trog has a laptop, and that's where we kind of left it for right now. Some of the tasks that we have Captain Nelson working on, he expressed a, a need now for a laptop, so we ended up purchasing his this year, and we told Sukie we would wait off for his till next year, because we're already over budget on that particular line item for 2022.
But we still have a, a computer in the office there in addition?
Yep. Yep.
And what is that used for?
That's typically where all the reports are filled out, and we do have some of our shared files on there for documents like SCBA check sheets, truck check sheets, where any firefighter would need to access on a work detail or a post-fire run incident. They can go right onto the desk, desktop, they can print off the forms that they need for the appropriate checks that they're doing. Those then get handed in to the operations captain for records retention.
Counsel, other questions on the fire side? I'm hoping to encourage another one of our charitable gambling operations in town to participate and generate some revenue here, but it hasn't happened yet. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbow.
I would just comment in regards to the election on Tuesday. The people that had never been in that building, other than the old station, were very impressed, and we're very glad to see that our firefighters had a decent place to use, be able to store their equipment, and a nice training room, and they liked the laboratory facilities.
I will say, when we went over there the first time to check out the layout, the ladies walked into their restroom, and what a world of difference, they were much more appreciative.
It was very much needed, and it turned out very well.
And to have two of them is even better.
Correct.
From the fire standpoint, any comments? So, we're gonna do it again in November, obviously. Did it work okay to be out of the station for a period of time?
Yeah, it's, I would, I would label it a minor inconvenience. You know, certainly, the amount of work that it takes to move the entire fleet out, everybody come up and get their turnout gear and bring their turnout gear home, and just the moving parts and the logistics of it is a minor inconvenience. Staff handled it very, very well. A big thank you to Public Works for their assistance as well. They got up bright and early Wednesday and started moving the fleet back into the fire station, which was very helpful. So, really, it was, everybody stepped up and played their role, but again, it's, it's part of what the city needs to do to accomplish very important business. So, we're flexible in what we need to do, and again, for a day of minor convenience, we'll all survive, so...
Mr. Mayor, what happened with the plan we had to try to change the polling?
The, because of the deadlines with the county, because we had to certify with the county where it was gonna be, we didn't have enough time to get other places certified.
So, we could in the future?
Yes, and I was just gonna mention too...
Move it away from there.
To Administrator Laner, that that's, that's an action item that we want to do this year, this coming year, so in the presidential election 2024, we have precinct one and precinct two where we want them to be, whether it's still together at a different location. We're hoping this is the last time we have to kick the fire department out for a couple of days.
Good idea.
So, we have, we have options, but the county and the state have requirements that have to be met in order to be a polling station, so that'll be a project that Scott can work on here, so in his team.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
So, on the small tools and equipment, it looks like we spent sixteen thousand is what we're projecting, and we're going back down to five, so we budgeted four, so what was the twelve grand overspend, and do we anticipate that next year, or are we covered?
I'd have to go back and look at the invoices specifically to, to give you an answer on what the sixteen thousand dollars all entails. I think between what we've been able to purchase this year, both from our line item budget and the bond...
Yeah.
I don't anticipate a whole lot more of major expenditures, but that's, of course, not accounting for a tool that breaks or gets damaged, whatever the case may be.
I didn't know if it was a ramp up.
Yep, so what you're seeing is kind of that, getting up to that par level that we've been talking about after the transition from Ramsey, where we, we're gonna see some higher expenditures, and then those will really start to level off over time.
Okay. I'll say, some of that, too, is, is initially, some of that ramp up, we thought would be coming out of the bond.
Correct.
And when we looked back at the requirements to be capital improvement out of the bond, some of the things didn't qualify, so they had to go back into operations. So, that was part of it, it's a one-time or a occasional purchase, we thought would be bonded, but because it didn't have the ten-year life.
Correct.
So, we're scrutinizing that more, and I know you're working with, your team's working with Natalie on putting together a spreadsheet to say, here's, here's everything that came out of the bond, here's everything else, so this number is, again, projected, I don't know that it's there, but based on what we spent year-to-date, this is projected, so I don't think we've actually spent the sixteen, but it's headed that way if we're not careful.
Correct.
So, anything we can control from here on out, that would be good.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Anything else from you, chief?
No, sir.
Everything's going well?
Everything's going well. We had a, a very nice department meeting last night with some additional training, it was interrupted a little bit with a few calls, but all in all, things are moving along on track. Staff is happy, they're doing a tremendous job, as everybody here knows, it, it really is incredible to watch this group with how tight they are, and to Councilmember Rainbow's point, the amount of pride that they have in that facility and that station really shows through when you have outsiders come in and take a look. This is a proud, proud group of people who do tremendous work within the community, and we couldn't be happier to be a part of this process.
Appreciate the, the team building, you know, when I was over there working on the plumbing issue, the grill that gets used on Wednesday nights.
Yep.
You know, again, great team building opportunity. The team building with the sheriff's department, I understand they've gotten a burger or two off that grill as well.
Sheriff's Office has been absolutely fantastic. It's, it's really become a second home for the deputies that are working here. Staff is working wonderfully together, which really does make a difference out on the street. It, it's much more visceral when you can say, Bill, I need your help on this, versus, hey, you, get over here. And it's, it's really paid dividends very early on, so it's been impressive to watch the two.
And you know when they're there.
Yep.
As opposed to the random shifts we had before, you know who it is, and when they're there, and where they would be.
Yep.
I would also think, because so many of our calls are medical calls, they're probably, if they're in town, they're the first ones there.
Yeah, if they're not tied up on something else or assisting somewhere else, they can get there pretty quickly. The duty officer vehicle certainly helps us either get there first, or when we don't, we're not too far behind the deputies, but it's, it's worked out really well. I couldn't be happier with how this arrangement has worked out so far.
So, there's, there's one other thing, and it's not really, hopefully, doesn't affect the budget, but, you know, we, we put in the well over by the hockey rink to supply this building, the fire station, the pavilion, and the parks, potentially a bathroom and the recycling center, so that, the staff is investigating. But one of the things that, when the health department was here certifying the well, they talked about the potential for a storage tank for water in the fire station. And because the, Joe had a great idea of rather than running fractional boring all the way down to this building to come over to the fire station, the money we had set aside for the well could potentially fund something like that. So, I know Captain Trog was looking at opportunities there, but the well is coming in about twice the capacity we thought it would, and we don't know what the big well's gonna do, you know, they, they were saying they're probably gonna be down in limestone.
Yep.
And it may not work right across the street like this one is, but if we're getting eighty gallons a minute, if we can get a storage tank that you could use for topping off or filling the engine or filling the rig, the fire rig, and utilize the funds that we had set aside for the well, we, we want to investigate that, because it doesn't affect the budget, per se, but it might give us some flexibility in the station, even once the big well is in.
Yeah, I think, I think we just want to make sure that we're, we're talking apples to apples. An internal holding storage tank of, let's say, a thousand gallon capacity certainly could have its benefits internally. When we start talking about emergency response and the need to fill, and the need to fill rapidly, that, that's not gonna meet the demand.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that at all, and, and that's where Captain Trog was saying, I can't replace the big well with this. This is simply internal. Night to Unite, instead of running up to St. Francis, you top off internally. I mean, if you have a thousand gallons, you can fill the engine, you can fill the, the grass rig, you can top off a tanker, but it's not for emergency, you're not gonna be pulling in there and filling off that tank.
Yeah.
But the idea would be, if there's, there's vertical space there, if we can engineer it properly, it might be a very useful thing to have in the wintertime when you don't want to go out and top off outdoors.
Yeah, I, I think it would, we'd certainly want to take our time on it and make sure that what we're looking at is, is the right thing for the right reasons at the right time. Unfortunately, I can't answer that for you tonight.
I know Captain Trog was looking at it.
Yep, and we, we can continue to have dialogue on that component and vet it properly and see if that's the direction we want to go. But yeah, I, I... But yeah, I, I certainly would not opt for a holding tank versus a high-capacity well.
No, that's, that's never been the consideration.
Okay.
It's just, we don't know where that well's going to end up being, and if it isn't right across the street, a holding tank might be-
Correct.
Pretty beneficial.
Correct.
It'd be beneficial, probably, but it'll be even more so if that well is not across the street.
I would agree with you.
So, just want to have our options open while we have the money set aside and it doesn't go somewhere else.
Absolutely.
And you are aware that the, the well is coming over to the fire station and to the other buildings from there?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
All right, and we'll switch over to Public Works, six oh two, page eleven. Frank, aren't you glad you're not coming that direction at this time of night all the time?
Well, my mayor members of the council, I'm so sorry. I thought I provided adequate time, and I obviously did.
Yummy.
It was right up there.
You know how many years they worked on, on upgrading that whole stretch of 169?
They're still working on it.
Yeah, they forgot they wanted to get rid of all the stoplights.
I apologize again, that's, there is no excuse.
So Joe, did you work with Lori on this? Are these, have you seen this? I need your numbers.
On time, we went together in the first meeting, you, Mary, and Lori and Natalie.
Frank, so have you seen these numbers that are in front of you right now?
Well, one question, HSA, HSA account, what is that all about? Went from five hundred to a hundred. I thought the employees invested in that, not the city.
The, the twenty-four dollars in 2022 projected, that's an administration fee, so the city has to pay to administrate that. You guys put your contributions in, but the administration fee is paid by the city. Why we put five hundred dollars in there last year to administrate it, I don't know. And a hundred, I think she's just being careful that's, not knowing what the administration fee is going to be this year. She's, I'm guessing she just took last year and, and put a buffer in there. That's what we pay the, the group to administrate your funds. So general supplies, you got twenty-seven thousand projected for this year, and we went up to sixty-two thousand. Do we know-
They included tires and metal stuff into that. Do you get rid of some of the line items? They incorporated tires, signs, culverts, stuff like that together.
Does that make sense? Let's go to some, some quite varying things. The culverts are, you're buying culverts for people to put under new driveways or just for streets?
Both.
Oh, and if somebody puts in a new driveway, they pay us for the culvert?
Yes.
And so the tires, and we were talking about the three fifty needing tires, that would be from this year's budget, but what do you anticipate for tires next year? What rigs are needing?
Greeters probably need tires next year.
How many thousands do you anticipate that to be?
Too many.
Have it, I assume they've gone up like everything else?
They're probably about seven hundred dollars apiece, eight hundred.
And you've got six, eight? So what do you got on there?
Six.
Six.
And just for information, the greeters going to the hospital tomorrow. Water pumps out of it.
How, how's it getting there?
I got a truck coming, probably a truck would come in, it'd be cheaper than having a company hold it.
Out to Columbus?
Yeah.
Do they anticipate how backed up are they?
They'd free them to get it in next week.
Is the pump available, do you know?
They won't come in until they-
So you're gonna, is it gonna, we're expecting rain tomorrow, is this going to impact your schedule?
Well, I figure if it rains, I'm hoping I can talk to Ramsey about using theirs, borrowing that one.
Motor fuels, we had, we talked about, you know, projecting twenty-four thousand this year, we budgeted twenty. At one point, the way diesel was going, it was going way up. We're down, back down to thirty-five. You good at thirty-five?
I'm good with it, but at that first meeting, we did agree on forty.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I think thirty-five would work.
Are we looking at any pre-buy?
I haven't talked to them yet this year, because I don't know if they'll even give you an option yet.
So in the, do we have two tanks back there, off-road and road diesel?
Both off-road.
They're both off-road? Otherwise, we're buying our, our gas from, our diesel from Bill's?
For what?
For the, for the, for the on-road trucks, or are we buying the diesel from Bill's?
Running off-road and everything?
Running everything?
Taxing them so you can do it. Even the fire trucks run off-road.
So is that where you guys are filling up? So the, the thirty-five is there in your budget? You've got fuels, too?
Correct.
So your four thousand's coming out of the same tank, so?
They're not throwing up our games.
Yeah, we fill up either at Bill's or, they've come up to, I know they've filled up in St. Francis a couple times.
They're running, they're running highway fuel-
Yeah.
-in the fire station. Fire truck.
So can they run off-road?
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Is there a, a difference in the product, or just the taxes?
Taxes and die.
Taxes and die.
Yep. Yeah, it's essentially the same fuel.
Would it make sense to fuel up here?
If it is accessible-
It's going to be cheaper than Bill's.
Yeah, we just get a, get a remote.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, because that's going to be cheaper than mine at Bill's. All right, so if they stick their, most of their four thousand in with your thirty-five thousand, or is it going to be all right?
Yeah. Yeah, they don't use that much, do they?
Not a ton. The duty officer vehicle would, has the highest fuel demand on the-
Or we don't have gas.
Right, we'd still need bills for gas, but for the engine and the tanker, that'd be okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Just jokingly, just for, for cheapish, then do you go to Bill's on Mondays with the coupon?
If I would have known that, I felt up there last night for my squad, and there was no coupon to be had.
Yeah, Monday is double coupon.
Actually, there's always a ten, ten cent coupon, but on Mondays, it's double.
Oh, really?
Twenty-five gallons.
Every penny helps.
And-
I'd still prefer us to go back to two thirty-nine a gallon, personally.
We're working. It's getting there.
Yeah.
But yeah, there is, there is actually an electronic coupon most of us use, so if you guys are going over there, there is a, you know, ten cents is ten cents, but twenty cents on Mondays, so.
Yeah.
But there's electronic coupons you can have on your phone, and that works really well, so.
Another thing I didn't know why it was dropped was the repairs and maintenance of streets.
That's what I was going to ask about next. So we dropped that fifty thousand dollars.
That's where we're taking all of our street repairs out of, culverts, digging up the streets and stuff, and that wasn't discussed at the first meeting that dropped that.
Well, so, so what she's got is, so Natalie, do you know in four oh five, what that is going to cover?
Wasn't it just if you had to have somebody?
Contractors.
Yeah, just to see if you had to have anything done? That wasn't crack filling or patchwork? Was it ditch work and that kind of stuff, too, on the roads?
Four oh five, yeah, ditch work, digging up bad spots in the road, replacing culverts and stuff.
So where was patchwork and crack fill, because that doesn't show up before?
It was all under-
It was all in the, the sixty thousand?
Now you're, now you're, I don't mind seeing it.
Because we just broke, we itemized that, so that's patchwork and crack filling is fifty-six, plus you left ten in there, so it actually goes up six grand over the 2022 budget.
Right.
And this year, we took forty-five thousand out of gravel fund to pay for dust control.
So we not budgeted any calcium chloride this year?
No, no calcium chloride, no, uh, calcium.
Oh, because it was in, it looks like she put it all in the, the repair and maintenance, so I think she had crack filling, patching, and, and calcium, all in the same budget. And we used forty-five thousand to the cracks, or the calcium. So we put a line item for forty-six, seven in there. Gravel, we kept the same, and you, you quit gravelling, so she's added a twenty-two for projected, because you quit gravelling, because you took the money and put it in calcium, right?
Right. And mayor members of the council, of course, the calcium chloride went up from thirty, which I think has been a pretty standard number, to forty-five, fifteen thousand dollars in a matter of a year for the same streets we, we've been talking about over time. We may see that visit us again, yet again, next year.
Well, it's going to be like fuel, it's just going to keep dropping.
Yeah, plus we pulled out money from that sixty grand from repairs and maintenance, pulled out the money from that to also buy salt this year, because salt wasn't left in, actually.
All right, so one of the, one of the things that looks like we're cleaning up is identifying crack filling. At this point, the way we've been doing crack filling and not knowing anything about costs, we're anticipating that thirty-six thousand will cover our crack filling next year. You good with that, Joe?
It's a starter. I, I don't know what the prices are going to do.
But I mean, all things equal, we don't, we don't know if it's going to double or half next year, but, but as, as what we know right now, thirty-six would cover-
Yeah, because we did, we're hitting missing roads right now because of the work we're doing to the blacktop roads, so we're hitting missing.
The, the patchwork, that's a couple of small projects, but, but that's twenty thousand there. We've got sixty-seven thousand for gravel and rock. What would be your intention on that for next year?
The lady said already told me it's going to go up, so I would leave that alone. I mean, I wouldn't raise it or lower it.
And we're doing most of that hauling ourselves?
Yeah.
So that's, that's actual material?
Right.
So it looks like last year, we're, we're projecting for this year fourteen-five for salt and sand, we're putting fifteen thousand in there. Again, you good with that number?
Yep.
In calcium chloride, we're going to guess it's going to be about forty-seven thousand?
I'd guess it's forty-five this year. I figured, get that some cushion in there.
How many miles we do this year? Eleven?
Ten, eleven.
Ten? Would we typically do those same roads next year, Joe?
Probably, that's our high, high-traffic roads, high-speed roads.
Mayor members of the council, we did receive one complaint from an individual, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the, the name of the street, but that individual did say, she was, "Why didn't I get calcium chloride?" So there may be similar kinds of questions coming toward you of that nature. I don't know how long a street segment, and therefore, what the cost might be in that case.
And we, we, you know, again, depending on the street, we take, typically have not gone to dead-end streets, we're doing through streets-
Right.
And the more high-volume, high-volume tend to be a little higher speed, unfortunately, but it's that up.
The Ruby's talking about the Hundred Eightieth and Rhinestone.
What's that?
The Ruby's talking about the Hundred Eightieth and Rhinestone.
Was it Hundred Eightieth or was it Rhinestone that complained?
Well, both, it turns into Rhinestone.
We, we've had somebody at the end of Rhinestone that has had concerns over the years.
Yeah, but when you spread it, they want to grade it every week, too, so we'll just-
And it's also a dead end?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Well, I guess, one of the things we have to think about, too, is dead ends can be very busy roads, too. The fact that it's not a through street does not mean that there isn't heavy, heavy traffic on it, so the fact that we say we don't do dead ends, I think that needs to be looked at.
Well, usually you don't have this, the high speed.
So, Mr. Mayor, and then I, I guess, I'm, I'm confused on this, because in 2021, we approved the budget for gravel and dust control at sixty-seven thousand dollars for 2021. In 2022, we approved that same dollar amount, the sixty-seven thousand dollars for gravel and dust control. So when I hear that we didn't budget for dust control, I don't believe, that's not what, to me, is reflected in our budget from last year. So I just want to make sure, however, we're moving what to what, that, that we have sufficient dollars and we spend that as we said we were going to.
The paperwork I got for our budget, you did not show calcium chloride or calcium.
Well, I get, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To, to Mr. Blaze, I don't know what paperwork you have, I've, this is what the budget we passed, and, and, you know, I, I don't know what you have, so I'm not, I'm not saying I, you know, what you have isn't correct, but I'm looking at what we had at our September twenty-seventh, 2021 approval of the budget, and then what we had the previous year also, so.
What, what got confusing, Councilmember Rainville, on that, is, yes, we budgeted sixty thousand dollars-
Sixty-seven.
Uh, well, on item four oh five, repairs and maintenance for streets, we did sixty thousand dollars, and that included crack filling and patchwork. And for some reason, last year, it wasn't broken out in the budget, like it always had been in previous years. Gravel, rock, et cetera, included the calcium chloride at sixty-seven thousand, and projected to date, we're at sixty-eight thousand. So we were pretty close, when the calcium came in quite a bit higher.
So, but Mary's comment is, so why are we going to spend a hundred and five next year?
Right, that's what I'm saying, so it was, it was there but lumped in. So Joe's right in saying, I didn't see it, because it was all lumped in together. I didn't have a line item for it.
But it was-
It's not that we didn't budget for it, we just didn't line item it.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
But it's the same, that was the same line, line item with the same items in it since I've been on the council. So I, I, I just, I don't know where the confusion came in, and I'm confused as to what we're going to say there.
Well, it might have been broken down from Lori and Cory and them in their books, but it wasn't in my paperwork they gave me.
Okay, all right.
And they were gone, so I couldn't ask them.
And Mr. Mayor, again-
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I don't doubt what you saw, Joe, I'm just going by what we, as a council, agreed to, so I, I just want to make sure that whatever numbers we go forward with, that we have the right amount in the right columns, because people were really upset. I got calls about, what, I mean, I'm not getting dust control.
Mr. Mayor?
Frank?
I didn't add, I, I don't think I added to the positivity of this, because I guess I didn't have the understanding that we had thirty miles of dirt road, classed road, and so I didn't, I wasn't aggressive in getting this done. I found out quickly the error of my ways, so I'm certain that next year will be earlier and get the job done before people are lighting up the phones. I apologize for that.
So, so let me ask, because the, the purpose of this is trying to get the numbers right, and, and we're, we're going to the things that stand out compared to last year's budget. And if, as we see here, last year- And if, as we see here, last year's gravel, rock, and calcium was sixty-seven thousand, and we spent twenty-two nine on gravel and then quit to take the rest for calcium chloride, calcium chloride came in higher, so we, we anticipated, I think, thirty-two for calcium?
Thirty-two to thirty-five, yes.
Um, and so the rest of that would have gone in to gravel, so let's say, it's even ten thousand, we'd have put thirty-three into gravel and thirty-five into calcium or vice versa. Um, this year, we're anticipating forty-six, seven for calcium, and we're still only going to do ten or eleven miles a road. So we've got those other twenty miles of gravel road that people are going to wonder why they aren't getting it. And then we're going to go back and gravel to the tune of sixty-seven thousand. We don't know what place that's going to charge for gravel, you know, it's going to be more than we were paying. But I think that's where we should, would look at is, the roads we've picked to, to calcium chloride, should there be any more, and if there would, that, that number will go up. And then the gravel that you plan for next year, now, when we're doing calcium chloride, what's your policy been on if we gravel or not? If we're doing calcium, do you not gravel the year before, or that year, the year after?
If it's a fire plan on gravel in that particular road, I won't calcium chloride until the following year.
So.
If it's one of the high speed, high traffic roads.
Have you, uh, have you identified the roads you're going to, uh, gravel next year?
No, not yet.
Because that would make a difference, and if, if you're going to gravel roads that we calcium this year, we move that calcium at the same amount to another set of roads. If we need, if we feel we need to do more roads.
Only bad thing about doing that, is if you give another road calcium chloride, you're going to not do that every year. They're going to be screaming for it. Just like the people we've been doing, they think they deserve it now, because they're right. Just like the recycling, now, once you start taking something, you can never stop. That's only the bad thing about calcium chloride.
Yep.
I mean, it's a good product, but worse, people think they deserve it, you owe it to them.
And in, in last summer and this summer being so dry, it's probably much worse than.
I graded, uh, yesterday, and there was no moisture in it, even the calcium chloride roads, it was, it was dust, it was dry. It was less dust than it was during.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
So are we going to spend forty thousand dollars more on gravel next year, or not?
That's the question I'm asking.
So.
So that's a question that, again, we have another budget meeting coming up.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
And so I think Joe and, and Scott need to get together and talk about what's going to be gravel.
I look at most of the changes on this, and, you know, it's a lot of inflation, inflation numbers, because stuff has went up, I get that, I get calcium chloride has went up, so it's like if we need to, you know, if we said it was, we're spending forty-five grand on calcium chloride, and that's going to do the ten or eleven miles or whatever it is, and it's went up ten or fifteen percent, all right, it needs to be fifty grand or fifty-two grand, and we're going to gravel, last year, we gravelled twenty-four thousand dollars worth of roads, and we're going to do that again with whatever the inflation is of ten or fifteen percent, so that's thirty-five, then I can kind of buy the, hey, the number's probably not sixty-seven, it's probably seventy-seven or seventy-eight, but, you know, we're showing a hundred and thirteen, and I'm like, do we, are we going to gravel that much more than we did?
We usually gravel about fifty thousand dollars worth, we gravel alone. This year, we didn't, because I pulled the money out and gravelled for chloride.
But what I struggle with, if we say we gravel that much, then we aren't spending that much on calcium chloride, because sixty-seven has been the number, we, the last couple of years, it's ranged between fifty-seven and seventy-two, so we split the difference at sixty-seven last year, and now we're coming in at a hundred and thirteen this year. So, I don't, I, we just need to understand, okay, how many miles do we think we're going to do next year, and what that, what is that going to cost? And if we say we're going to do, what do we have, thirty miles of gravel?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five? If we say whatever stretch we're doing next year is going to be more, because it's a longer stretch than we've done in the past, okay, but it, it looks like, at least from going back the last couple of years, we're spending fifty, sixty grand more than we have in the past. So that's what we, that's what I'd like to understand a little better. The rest of it, I think, is like, you know, fuel went up, salt went up, it kind of is what it is.
Mr. Mayor?
Emily.
Do other cities always pay for the calcium chloride? Because as a resident of Oak Grove, I think we had the option to pay for it if we wanted it to come through, but I don't think that they were paying for all of it.
I believe St. Francis gives the option.
Mr. Mayor?
Oak Grove used to spray, then they quit, now it's up to the residents, they want it or not.
Councilmember Rainville.
Uh, and in St. Francis, when I talked to their public works department, they have certain streets that they do, um, out of their budget, but the vendor that they've used, um, has agreed to, um, if a resident wants additional, they can pay that additional for that, for that role, you know, that whatever portion, so I, I don't know, I haven't checked with Oak Grove, but.
So do we make this open to our people if they want to? I mean, if they don't get it and they want it, that they could pay for it? I mean, is it something we consider opening up to our residents?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
We can have that discussion, yeah. Um, I don't know how they do it with their billing, I don't know, and I think sometimes it depends on the, the contractor, if they want to do that additional work, it's more paperwork for them. It's like when we did the road, the last road project, one contractor would be willing to do extra in your driveway, to concrete in your driveway, and you paid them for it. The other contractor in the other location was, I don't want any part of that, I just want to do this road, be done and out. So it, it, some of that is dependent on the, on the contractor.
Sure, okay.
Obviously, you also have to have the answer, why are you paying for his road and not my one?
Correct, we have to look at other communities that do that, what their rationale is, what's the response been?
Mr. Mayor, don't we have to have some kind of parameter, parameters around who gets this? I mean, to say, just because a group of people on the road are more vocal, does that mean that they get it? Or is it, or do we give it because this is a through street and there's more traffic?
Car, car counts, whatever.
And so we don't do it as, and we have decided not to do the ones that are dead ends and not as much traffic? I mean, do we have a system?
Do we have it documented? No.
But maybe.
Do we, do we have, as I just, that's why I was asking, Joe, what is our practice then?
So maybe we should have it written, so.
Scott, what our policy is going to be?
Scott can tell people when they call.
We have to, we have to have a policy.
Yeah.
Joe needs to know.
Yeah, right.
And residents need to know, and so if we're going to, if we're going to agree to do a third of the roads, and we're going to do them on a regular basis, except for the years they're gravelled, um.
Yeah.
You know, do we open up more length of road in the years they're gravelled, and then, as Joe says, have to keep doing that? At one point, we had staff that said, let's budget to all of them every year.
We can't afford that anymore, can we? Do all the roads, if it's costing us as much to do this, ten miles?
I know we can afford it when they suggested it, but, but it is one of those things that, you know, we're, we're paying a certain amount for blacktop, um, and if we do a major project, we assess it, so it is one of those things, as a council, we're going to have to sit down and say, what is our road policy going to be?
Yeah.
Because, again, those that live on county roads, they don't face any of those. But we have to have something that's equitable to all residents.
Right.
And right now, Joe's saying, here's, the best I know, based on practice, here's my numbers. To Councilmember Alder's point, we're, we're paying a lot more, what are we graveling? So the question is, what's the gravel plan for next year? What's the potential cost? What's the calcium dust control for next year? We're going to presume crack filling is close, uh, patchwork, and again, you did a couple of patches this year where we contracted them out, one of them was the big one on Hundred Eighty-Fifth and Hundred Eighty-Seven, and then sodium, and then, uh.
When are they going to start tech?
Just curious. Rogers Lake?
Well, I mean, when are they going to do Hundred Eighty-Fifth?
What's that?
When are they going to do Hundred Eighty-Fifth?
I don't know.
Have you jumped Shane yet?
I haven't. This is the micro-surfacing on Hundred Eighty-Fifth, do we know anything about that yet?
Mayor members of the council, I don't think it's completed as, at this point, but I could be wrong.
Shane gave me two weeks ago, it's supposed to be done in two weeks, it's not done yet.
Was there a resolution on that?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, yes, there was a resolution approving that, Hundred Eighty-Seven, three thousand.
The price went way up.
Yes.
I don't know why the work was supposed to be done.
And I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
God, can you check on that, please, and we'll go back to the council?
Mr. Mayor, going back to your conversation here, it's not uncommon whatsoever for cities to have what they call a special assessment policy, but it's far broader, so it does talk about special assessments, but it also talks about all those things in between, and you've got an added complication, because on one hand, you've got the Batumus Roadways, on the other hand, you've got, uh, class five roads, I guess, as we euphemistically call them, and they demand different things at different times. Uh, and so they may be different if I live on a class five road and you live on a Batumus road.
Well, then you add in the, the additional challenge, that a third of our roads are county roads.
Good point.
So when you, you want to talk to those people living on Batumus versus class five, and you want to include those people that are not affected by either of them.
Yeah. And the county has a tone set of guidelines that it uses.
It's a problem.
All right, so that one will need to be investigated a little more, tightened up. So we talked about, excuse me, what general supplies was tires and, and, is that where you're getting your, your bits for the blades, your tips and?
Yeah, so included in that general.
And then the repairs and maintenance, is that equipment? Four oh four?
Yep. Small stuff.
So if you've got a, so where would, where would you go if, uh, the three fifty breaks down? That, that category?
Graveyard.
Pick one you want to hang on to, but if, you know, let's say, we hit a deer.
Insurance, insurance coming.
What about the grader, that's, you know, where would that come?
And so where, where's it, so the grader is not under warranty anymore, uh, so the water pump on the grader, where's that, what category is that going to come out of?
This year's going to come out rental, rental equipment.
Because you got money that you haven't used?
Yep.
Okay, let's say this happened in January, where would you take it?
General supplies or wherever we have the money at.
Where, where, so the repairs and maintenance though, wouldn't that be your first spot?
Yeah, we're knocking down on that.
No, what I'm saying, this is January, so. So we went, we went, last year, we had ten thousand, now we moved it up to sixteen thousand.
Yeah, it'd be the first place we'd go, but if that's not enough, then we just rob someplace else.
And rentals, is that typically maybe the lift, the equipment used for blowing out the, the water lines?
Right, there's water lines that we need, uh, rent somebody's back door or something. Five fifties went into the shop, the hospital on the twenty-fourth, to get the steering stabilizer fixed.
Was that the five fifty you were looking at? That's also going to need tires? The five fifty that needs it, that's the.
Five fifty needs tires with the.
But you're not going to do that until you get your front end fixed, your steering fixed?
Yeah, since starting now.
And who does that?
Got to take it back down to Boiler, I think, the Believers, we called it. It didn't fix, washed, repaired once already.
So right now, on our, our general supplies, we've got sixty seven, sixty-two thousand budgeted, and projected right now is twenty-seven. So there's a chunk of. Chunk of room there, you have to get us through the year. Other than the grader, I'm assuming you're going to get grader tires before winter?
Probably not.
Probably not, get through another winter. Um, I want to go back up to the first line item, full-time earnings. Right now, we're projecting a hundred and nineteen four, and we moved it to a hundred eight for next year. What did we have in this year that we won't have next year?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
We not move some to park and, and to recycling?
And parking racks.
Yeah.
Certain, certain chunk of both.
That's right. Where does she call that out? She recycling removed. We took fifty percent of administration and put it in the recycling newsletter.
So full-time earnings in recycling went up sixteen six, and then in parking rack, full-time earnings went up fifteen hundred.
Yeah. And we're talking about eleven thousand here, and that recycling is moving Adrian over. Fifteen hundred to park is not, not covering that, eleven thousand. So Scott, could you look at that one with Lori too? So, right now, we'll have to wrap up here. You're going to work with Joe and Lori on first one, one hundred, part, uh, full-time earnings. Take a look at two oh three, right now, we're at twenty-seven, we got sixty-two thousand planned, um, and then you're going to look at four oh five, four eight, and four oh nine, and then, uh, four forty and four fifty. Four, four forty and four fifty, gravel, rock, and calcium chloride. Anybody else have any questions on those that they can look up for our next meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Not, it's just as a reminder that we then also, part of our to-do list is a policy, we come up with a policy for the calcium.
For the calcium?
Yep. Who, what, where, when?
I, I think we also need a policy on the crack filling, because as Shane was saying, if we're going to be overlaying roads, we don't want to be crack filling the year before.
Right.
I think we need a policy there to say which roads do we want to crack fill. Our policy's just been one half of the city in one year and one half the other, I think we need to revisit that, make sure we're working with the, uh, street plan, so that we're not wasting crack fill, and we're not skipping roads on one side of the city just because it's not their turn, that even get deteriorate.
Might change the subject, but we happen. Would you happen to know on top of your head, you're going, is sodium going to get overlaid or anything?
The patching?
What are they going to do?
Overly, you mean in the chains plan?
Yeah.
No, I thought that would have been next year. And it looks like in reviewing his capital plan, he just went by date rather than road condition. I think it should be included in next year's plan. And I don't know if he's got all the feasibility work done on that, but that's something we need to talk with Shane because if that road's in bad shape, we don't want to let it go another year.
Well, I mean, it needs patching. I don't want to waste, put the money in it because it's on the schedule for next year.
Scott, can you check on that with Shane and see if we can include that one?
I just thought maybe you might know on top of your head.
Yeah, we were talking earlier today.
It wasn't, it wasn't part of our capital plan for next year, which surprised me that, and we were up there looking at the Woodhaven development. It's pretty rough shape. It's not a surprise that one didn't get in there because it's, it's actually deteriorating. It's not, it needs heavy patching before it could even be overlaid.
Right, that's why I don't want to put the money in it if it's on the schedule for next year or close to it.
All right, anything else for Public Works that you want clarified before next meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Frank?
Just a question both for Dave and Joe. Are there any aspects of your respective budgets that you've not had the opportunity to provide to the council here so that they can think about those things as they go through the approval process from here on? So, they've heard everything. I think we thank you for covering it.
Well, if you come up with anything between now and the last week of August, give us a little time to think about it, but make sure you get it in to Scott. And if you hear something that... I was just reading about another city that actually does a biennial plan. So, we do a, this year's hard plan and next year's draft plan so that we can be building. So, if you're thinking about something so that we can maybe slide into it rather than have abrupt changes every year. So, if you're thinking about anything else for this budget or things we haven't considered, like sodium, if there's something else that pops up you want to see on next year's plan, if there's something else you can see, get that information to Scott. If you see something that's going to be hitting next year, maybe we can do something this year to smooth that transition too. So, I like the idea of a biennial plan that you firm up every year. So, we're thinking ahead a little bit. And that'll certainly work in with our capital plans. From the council, anything else? From Lori's note or... Local government aid, zero.
So, you start $50,000 right from the start.
Yeah, and that was, that was actually road money they gave us. They called it government aid, but it was road money that was not designated. We could use it anywhere, it wasn't NSA money, but... Yeah, that puts us $50,000 in the hole right there. You know, now the primary's over, maybe they'll have a special session and remedy that. Anything else from the council or staff?
My understanding is that we're at least tentatively talking about August 29 for our third budget discussion. And hopefully, then, we'll be able to come back with all the answers to all the questions and be able to get the council's consensus and then move to September 13 with preliminary budget levies as we must do based on our schedule, at least.
Correct.
Thank you.
Everybody good for the 29th? You will not be here on the 29th?
No.
Just like tonight, I know.
No, intentionally.
No, he won't be here, he's out of town.
You're right, I'm sorry.
All right, anything else? Otherwise, we'll take a short break and start again, that's it.
What time is the 29th?
That's it?
What time?
5:30 on the 29th? Yes.